Okay, I'll call this committee meeting to order. Seeing the agenda, are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Being none, we'll start off with a presentation by our Director of Legal Services. Counselor Vay?
When we're looking at, and just correct me if I'm wrong, the property at 281 Cotter Street, I'm not sure if I'm able to mention, but I know there's an interested group. Sorry for being cryptic, but I'm not sure if I can say it here.
No, maybe what we'll do is we'll deal with that property separately and you'll be able to... So what we'll do is we'll deal with that property separately and then you'll leave the meeting and we can deal with that property independently, okay?
All right, thank you.
Mr. Sheldon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that there was a handout at the beginning of the meeting that was upside down in your desk. That is a map that goes with the closed session information.
Closed session, okay, I see that. Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Lister.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We are pleased today to be talking to you about property. We are going to, in the open session, provide a high-level overview of the town's legislative authority to deal with the acquisition and disposition of land. We will then move into a closed session, at which time we will provide a brief background, an update regarding some specific properties and ones that we have received council direction in closed session, and also to provide information about the status of various negotiations and discussions regarding other key properties. So given the limited amount of time for this presentation, this is meant to be a high-level overview. We will be touching on a large number of properties. The goal is to provide as much background and update information as we can, and if there are specific questions that are beyond the scope of this presentation, we will write those down, and if necessary, we will follow up with some information reports. So just to start off, here's the roadmap. I'm going to be talking a little bit about our legislative authority over properties, and then we will be moving into closed session to talk about council-identified strategic priority properties. We will be talking about property negotiations with the region and VIVA, and then we will go into other and more recent property initiatives, and we will provide an overview and update on the town's lease and license agreements and negotiations. So just to begin with, the town is a large landowner. Municipal property is comprised of lands for highways, parks, recreational, culture...
I have a question from Counselor Sponga as to process.
Yeah, in terms of, under the second heading of closed session, and council-identified strategic priority properties, are those priorities, properties that have been identified by previous council or properties that members of council, of this present council, may raise as of interest?
So those are properties through you, Mr. Mayor, that have been identified previously by council and that staff have received direction on. So we will be talking about those details in closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So municipal property is comprised of lands for highways, parks, recreational, culture, and entertainment facilities, municipal offices, operations, trails, open spaces, environmentally protected land, wetlands, water and wastewater facilities, transportation, fire services, and parking lots, to name a few. The town's authority over land within the town's boundaries are based on Sections 2 and 8 of the Municipal Act. As you know, and you've heard many times, municipalities are a creature of statute and are given broad powers for the purpose of providing good government with respect to matters within your jurisdiction. So when the Municipal Act was amended in 2001, the purpose of the amendments was to enhance the tools provided to municipalities to carry out their objectives. For that reason, municipalities were given broad and flexible powers to govern their affairs and to enhance the municipality's ability to respond to municipal issues. So like a natural person, municipalities are entitled to acquire and dispose of land. So I'm going to start with Section 270 of the Municipal Act. This section provides that municipalities shall adopt and maintain policies with respect to the sale and other disposition of land. So the history and purpose of this provision is to inform the public of a proposed sale before the municipality finds itself to sell the land. And this is intended to enhance the principles of openness and transparency. Now, the historical requirement does not mean that a municipality is required to disclose or include details of negotiations relating to the sale of land or information about offers received. The reason is because this kind of information could compromise the integrity of the sale process and could result in claims against the municipality for bad faith. It could also impact future negotiations with other property owners. So in accordance with Section 270, the town has a sale of land policy, it's legal, L-01, and this policy follows from a longstanding bylaw that the town had in place since 1993. The new policy, I say new, 2013, the policy aligns with Section 270 of the Municipal Act, and it establishes a consistent, transparent, and accountable procedure to be followed in the disposition of real property. It also gives the town flexibility to treat different kinds of land differently and the flexibility in determining the price. The policy generally provides that before any disposition of land occurs, there are certain key actions which must take place. So the lands must be declared surplus by council. Generally, there is one appraisal required. The method of disposing the land shall be approved by council, and notice of the proposed disposition is to be provided to the public. In terms of acquisition of land, there is no requirement in the Municipal Act for an acquisition policy. The need for land and property is often identified when determining the overall needs for infrastructure projects or service locations or extending and enhancing the town's inventory of parks and open space. So the town doesn't currently have a dedicated policy that deals with the acquisition of land. However, council has adopted a roadmap, and we're going to be talking more about that in closed session, that identifies and prioritizes, sorry, property acquisition in the context of the town's official plan, parks' needs, study, and completion of the VIVA project. Now, sometimes opportunities to acquire real property are presented to the town through unsolicited offers arising through negotiations with a developer or through other levels of government or agencies such as the province, the region, or New Market Tay Hydro. These opportunities to purchase may be made in advance of the town having identified a particular use or need for the lands. But in all cases of acquisition, the town is currently guided by the delegation bylaw, and council is ultimately the approval authority for that acquisition, except for minor land acquisitions relating to road widening and approved capital projects, in which case the chief administrative officer and the community, sorry, the Commissioner of Development and Infrastructure Services are the approval authority. Lease and license agreements are similarly captured under the delegation bylaw. When looking at an opportunity to lease a town property or to enter into a lease, rent must be at fair market value, and the terms and conditions of the leases must be reviewed and approved by the lead department and legal services. The signatories for agreements of purchase and sale are also set out in the delegation bylaw. Once council has authorized either a disposition or acquisition of land, or in the case of lease and license agreements, the delegation bylaw identifies who is required to sign the specific agreement of purchase and sale or the lease and license agreement. The legal services handles the real estate transactions internally, unless the matter is urgent or unusually complicated, in which case we would retain external counsel to perform some of the work. I just wanted to say something about the official plan requirements for acquisitions of land. The town's official plan contains comprehensive environmental requirements prior to the acquisition of land. So those requirements include the need for a Phase 1 environmental site assessment, and where a Phase 1 environmental site assessment reveals that there may be contaminants on the land due to previous uses of the property, then a Phase 2 environmental site assessment must be conducted, and the Ministry of the Environment has regulations that require a record of site condition to be registered. So the record of site condition demonstrates to the ministry that the property is suitable for the proposed use by meeting soil, groundwater, and sediment standards for use. That basically concludes the legislative overview. We're going to be moving into the closed session, and we'll provide you then with another brief overview relating to the information in that session.
Any questions? Counselor Sponga?
I was under the impression, maybe I just misunderstood, misunderstood you, Astrid. Thank you for the presentation. But I thought that council had to identify a use and a need before they purchased, offered to purchase, or considered purchasing land. Isn't that the case? And I thought I heard you say that the purchase or sale of land can be considered prior of identifying a use.
That's correct. So through you, Mr. Mayor, since we don't have a policy that gives us those specifics about the timing of when the need must be identified, we do come across occasions when the town has been offered property through an unsolicited discussion or offer. So sometimes the offer happens before the need is identified, and we'll hear a little bit more about that in closed session. But no, we don't have any policy or any legislative requirement to identify a need first?
Okay, so let me get this clear. So you're referring to an offer to sell to the municipality?
That's correct.
The municipality doesn't necessarily have to have a need identifying for lands or capital projects prior to receiving that offer in order to move or respond to that offer?
That's correct.
However, is the town allowed to pursue opportunities to purchase key lands ahead of having identified what the use for those lands are, but just based on the strategic geographical, or whether geographical based on infrastructure and everything else, positioning of those lands?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I would give you the same response, which is yes. The town isn't restricted either by policy or by the Municipal Act. town isn't restricted either by policy or by the Municipal Act in identifying a need first. It can pursue property opportunities, and then either through the course of those negotiations, it can simultaneously do review and research regarding the need, or it can provide an out purchase if it wishes and identify a need later.
Okay. On several occasions, I've been put in a spot where there have been key properties that have, or that have even been offered for sale, not necessarily to the municipality, but to everyone, like so put up for sale. And I was under the impression, maybe not through you, through the CEO, that the town had to identify a use before they could actually start considering the purchase of that property. So that isn't necessarily the case?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I think the practice has been that where at all possible, the preferred course of action is to identify a need and use for the property prior to acquisition. But because of the timing of when an offer may be received, when an opportunity may develop, that sequence of events might not nicely fall into place.
That's refreshing. Thank you.
I guess it would only make sense that we would only be pursuing properties that would have certain municipal purpose. So the principle is there, although how hardly defined that is, is, I think, might be a little different. But I'm sure that every member of council would want to know that any acquisition would serve a municipal purpose before they give any further consideration. So just a matter of practical application, I think, Counselor.
I'll leave it at that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Motion then to receive the presentation. Counselor Twinney, Counselor Zantz, all those in favor? Okay. I'll ask for a motion to go into a closed session, and the motion would be that the Director of Legal Services would provide us with a presentation regarding the proposed or pending acquisition and/or disposition of properties. I do wish to clarify Counselor Begg's declaration earlier, and I've been able to clarify that the property that's being referred to is on Page 11 or is referenced as Item 2B. And so Counselor Begg will leave the closed session when we deal with that property. So we'll deal with all of the other properties and then deal with that one separately, just so, for clarity, just as to where that was. And, okay. Motion then to go into closed session. Counselor Twinney, Counselor Begg, all those in favor? Justice Kerry?
Thank you.
Clear the room.